How are we doing Abigail?
Our screens are blue.
We don't look like that. Ours are funny color.
I don't think it matters.
I think it's an Easter thing.
It's like a purple filter. It's not mission.
I mean, I can't really, yeah, not that I need to look at it.
I just display it.
How are we doing Abigail? We ready? All right, I'll call us to order. Welcome everybody. Thanks for coming to your city council. First thing is always, let's silence our cell phones. And let's acknowledge those who came before. As we meet tonight, let us all remember that today, we are stewards of land that has been home to indigenous peoples for thousands of years. Before the recent arrival of European heritage dominant culture, we honor this land's ancestors as we go about our business today. Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I also just learned that a former mayor, long-term city resident has passed away, Bill Patterson. He used to joke when I'd bump into him on the street, we'd call each other your honor, and he said that he believes that they laid more sewer pipe during his administration than any other, and he was sort of like humorously proud of that. He was a great old guy and I'm grateful for his long time service. I think he was a current landmarks board member. He serves on our committee like until just now, right? To the twilight. Cheers, Bill. All right, agenda additions or corrections? Anything for us, Abigail?
No, there are none.
All right, so then we have business from the audience. I have four folks. In these Zoom times, what we do is you come up and you touch the flying saucer till it turns green and then you're on. And if folks can keep it to about three minutes or so, it'll enable us to get through the business. We'll start with Steve Labady. Make the red thing green.
There you go.
Jared, it's okay.
So you guys, hi, I'm Steve Labady and this is my wife Ella. And you should have a packet that is addressed to Tim. It's my first one. And then you should have a current It's my first one. And then you should have a current photograph of three cars in front of my house and a copy of a ticket. So, and a letter from Lois Colton, who is our neighbor also. So first I'd like to give thanks to Marty Morgan and Maven Oliver, Abigail, excuse me, Abigail Elder for their support and also to all you for the work you do for us. And I know it's it's hard and I just really want to honor you for that. So my wife and I need your help. We own rental property at nine ten third near May Street, across from Wilson Park. For four years now, Michael Scott has parked these three vehicles in front of my house. And it's it's a problem. So one gray van stays there all the time, and I think he uses it for storage or something. The other two come and go, and he sleeps there regularly. And but almost every night, there's at least two and sometimes three vehicles, and this has been going on for over four years. I've talked to Marty many times, and there's no laws and no ordinance that prevent that. So I've spoken to Mike three times, and he says that there's nothing preventing him from parking there, and I pleaded with him to spread the vehicles around this city or just, you know, just so that they aren't all in one place all the time. And most unempathetically, he said, too bad, you know, I'm not very keen on you wrong. The second time I asked him to move, he said he was going south and would move. He was going to Arizona or something, and he would move them when he went, but there was, he had never moved them. So I've spoken to the parking people in the city over seven times in the last four years. And the first time was three years ago, I had a female renter who expressed concerns about the homeless person living in in the van outside of her lot, you know, it made her feel very uncomfortable and unsafe. She spoke to the city with no result, and then I went down and spoke to the city, and it was, we can't do anything. Marty says over and over again, there's very little he can do along with Abigail. But there's, there's nothing you can do because there's no policy, there's no law. So how to create a policy that limits time that a non-resident can park, live, and sleep on the streets? And this is somebody who doesn't own property, who or isn't renting it or something, you know? So we go away and we leave our car on the street for a month, but you know, a homeless person. It's a different story, I think. So look. So part of the deal is so Mike keeps a propane tank on the outside of his van often. And so I asked Marty about this, and he talked to the fire department, and they responded, well, there's no code violation. So here's a propane tank on this, there's no sidewalk there, but it's where the sidewalk would be, so to speak. And so who's responsible if something happens? What if a kid comes along, starts playing with it, and there's a fire explosion, something like that? Anyway. So Mike has all his vehicles registered in Washington. And so I talked to Marty about that, and he says, well, there's no way we can verify that they're insured if they're in Washington. Okay, so I don't know, you don't know, we don't know if he has any kind of insurance to cover any kind of incidents that might happen. So how, and then, you know, he's got all his vehicles registered in Washington, so how can he be living in Hood River for over five years? And have his vehicles registered in Washington? Is he a property over there, whatever, but you know, somehow he's very articulate at what he does. He knows the law. So Marty ticketed Mike's gray vehicle twice last week, and that's the position that it was in. And for being non-registered, abandoned, and a disabled vehicle. So then Mike simply rolled the vehicle back 10 feet, and Marty says, that's good. So now he's, and you got to get four tickets before they'll do any towing or any investigation. Anyway, so Marty said he'd have to start the whole process over again. So now the, he's backed it up, and Lois has a fence there, and he's blocking Lois's access to her backyard. So how do we verify that also that Mike's gray van is functioning and drivable? He says, Marty says he can't make him prove this. All he did was really literally roll it back. So anyway, so these are the questions and concerns I have, and thanks for listening and any support you give. It's just really frustrating. I've tried to be very empathetic with Mike. And how do we work this out so it works for you? Maybe you have one car here some of the time, or, you know, he's I won't say how, what it feels like, what he's telling me, but it's just, you know, it's just it's challenging, and we've worked really hard to keep our place looking good and taking care of it, spent a lot of time, a lot of energy, and it looks like a kind of a a used car. You know.
How frustrating, excuse me, I hear you.
Anyway, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to look, but they're there all the time. And again, Marty says he can't do anything unless there's some kind of a a thing that even if you just say, you know, you can park here 72 hours, but you got to move it, you got to go somewhere there 72 hours, 72 hours or whatever, but just for him to be there for four, going on five years, it's just it's challenging. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and your ears.
Oh, oh, still have anything to add? Come on up, go to.
Steve basically.
Okay, Steve basically said everything that I would probably say, except for the fact that it is now, because now, because I, as he says, he has three vehicles. Two vans are always next to my fence. One of them, I put in a bigger window in my bedroom, and so his one van, I think it's the one he primarily sleeps in. The window is up high above my fence, and so it made me really uncomfortable because he could look down into my bedroom. And so I did write him and ask him to, if you could possibly you know, move it forward, that it's making me uncomfortable. This is my bedroom, and you're looking right into it. He did move it to in front of Steve's place. But now that he's had to move out. Now, the interesting thing to me is if I didn't change my license, I thought if I live in Oregon, I have to change, there's a limited amount of time before me before I have to change into having an Oregon license plate. I thought that's one question I have. My other question is, I'm not sure why he doesn't park across the street. Those houses across the street are for the most part vacant. And but he always parks on our side of the street. He never parks in front of the park. He never parks in front of the two large vacant homes. It's always right in front of our places. And in my case, it's I mean, he is now parked in front of the access to my backyard. And when I've had construction, had a fence built last year, or when I, anything, whenever I've had anything to do, that's the access for the workers to get into the backyard, and I've had to like track him down and, you know, beg him to keep it open, and sometimes he does, and sometimes he doesn't. So anyway, it's, it's a dilemma. He's not noisy, he's not. He's completely uncommunicative is the main thing. So, all right, thank you.
Sorry that we can't do more at this time. It's not it's not being.
I mean, I'm just like an advocate. I mean, I, I feel the guy. This is his, this is his residence. It's just same, you could be, I could be very moved in around.
All right.
I'm little. I realized it's a little small.
Park is not that small.
Oh, good.
How can we read this?
Well, you are a grandpa now. Oh, I'm already on the thing. Hi, my name is Claudia Monson Flago. I am here to talk, to make a couple of comments about the urban renewal project list. I've been paying attention to the urban renewal plan on the west side for years since probably 2016, when we started that west side planning effort and kind of keeping track of project lists and TSP amendments and kind of seeing where we all were headed with various projects. And I made just three, by the way, I'm very enthusiastic about the urban renewal area in general and tax increment financing as a mechanism for infrastructure. I think it's worked very successfully in other jurisdictions, so I'm very happy that Hood River is looking at it at such a large scale. So the, I just put three little markups on this map as items that you might think about adding to your project list. And they're in dashed yellow, trying to match my yellow to your yellow already project list items. There are some benefits to these. So the first one is this connection between Frankton and 30th, which is basically an eastward extension of Sherman Avenue. It goes through the school district property. It goes through what is now Ross Brown's backyard field. And it intersects at your future north-south connector, which connects wine country to Maine. I think TSP folks are calling that Schoolhouse Road or something, alignment D in the west side plan. Anyhow, that extension of Sherman opens up so much, like hundreds of acres, well, sorry, not hundreds of acres, dozens of acres of residential developable land. And it would facilitate, if you did this as an urban renewal project, it would facilitate projects at and around the school district property. Not to mention creates another east-west connector through this whole kind of chunk of neighborhood. The next east-west extension that I think you might consider adding, and by the way, all of these are already TSP roads. They're just not part of your project list tonight that's being proposed for the west side projects. The next one is this east extension of wine country, which connects from Mount Adams all the way to Rand Road. And if you build that as part of an urban renewal project, it's going to do a couple of things. First thing, it's going to provide a very convenient east-west detour. Once you start doing major work on Cascade, Cascade is going to be torn up, going to have lager, is going to be redoing intersections. People are going to need and want an east-west connector. If you build this first, it'll be used. It's a 60-foot right away for your TSP. It also crosses the county land. The county has that landlocked kind of three or four acre piece that Henderson Creek runs through. And it goes through the city's CDP site at where it's ran. So you are facilitating private residential development to the tune of hundreds of dwelling units. You're facilitating the subsidized dwelling units on the CDP site. You're looping in the county. The last piece that I kind of think you guys should consider is a north-south connection between Sherman and Wine Country. And in the TSP, it's conceived as this canyon through, which is a Mount Adams southward extension. It's very steep and difficult to build that. I think that there's a better way to connect Sherman to May along Henderson Creek. So all three of these roads are expensive, you know, millions of dollars. I think you guys are at the $90 million mark in your current list that's in your pocket. I didn't bother to try to put a number to them because I think any construction number right now is irrelevant for what's happening in five or 10 years. But you know, it's obviously a budget consideration, but I think at the end of the day, what you have to look at is which of these roadways and which of these projects that you're doing are actually going to open the door to more high-paced, high-value construction, which will pay back your urban renewal debt faster. And yes, it sweetens the pot for private development. Obviously, that's the elephant in the room, right? But it also facilitates your CDP project, gets the county involved, gets the school district involved, because it goes right through their site, and provides various connection points where you're otherwise going to have traffic pinch points if you don't build these and wait for developers to build them. That's all I got. I don't really, I can stay for the discussion. My husband has hockey and I'm on bedtime duty, so, but.
Anne Harris?
Hello, everyone. Good to be here with you all. I'm Anne Harris. I work with Oregon State University Extension Open Campus Program. And part of my work is looking for needs in the community that might provide more opportunities, particularly for those that are underserved. My daughter Stephanie is a school counselor. Over the pandemic, we became very aware that many kids were suffering. And in particular, we know having grown up here, Stephanie grown up, and my being here in Hood River for 29 years, that, you know, there aren't very many black folks in the gorge, but over the, over the pandemic, we really realized that people can get together on Zoom. Hi. And there are black people all over the gorge, but in small numbers. So we came up with the idea about a year ago to put out the word and see if folks would come together on Zoom, and they did. But then didn't love being together on Zoom, wanted to get together in person, and we started having gatherings. We had picnics all through the summer, and we had a Halloween celebration and a Kwanzaa celebration, and about 30 families so far have been getting together. Or 30, 30 kids and parents, a number of families. And from across the river, from Mosher, the Dows, and Hood River, and now we want to do a celebration. And we want to celebrate Juneteenth. Juneteenth is a new holiday, a new national holiday, and we think that maybe there's a number of folks out there that don't aren't really understanding why that's a holiday even perhaps. And so we would love to do a celebration at Jackson Park. And that's what I'm hoping that you all will help us in waiving the fees for Jackson Park. We'd like to do the celebration on June, probably Sunday, June 18th. Because not everyone has that as a holiday, and we'd like it to be very well attended. Stephanie has already connected with a 12-piece band or 10-piece band out of Portland called Juju Buh, and we're hoping to bring them. We're also connecting with teachers at the high school. The next door is one of our partners as well, and very much wanting to support this event. The Somos Uno Committee is very much wanting to support this. That's a part of Gorge Accu Medical Ministry, so very much in favor of this event. And we hope to, it involves high school students and get middle school students involved, get some arts and poetry, some performances, and just make it a great day, and we'd love for the Hood River City to help us with this first, what will hopefully be annual celebration of Juneteenth here in the gorge. I'm just looking to see if we might waive those fees.
Thank you, and we're not going to discuss it inside right this moment, but thank you so much for coming in for your leadership on this.
Absolutely. I didn't print out anything for you, but I will send that, send out information, more details for you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on the agenda. We have two presentations, one from County Transit and one from McCad. See you in the front row. Please, please carry on.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. My name is Amy Schlappi. I am the Executive Director at Combury Transit. We also our actual name is Hood River County Transportation District. We do business as CAT. Sorry, I did the same where, hold on. All right, I think, well, now I have it, but then I don't know how to share it.
You speak enough.
Okay, here. Awesome. Thank you. And so I wanted to come here today to give us, give you all an update on our transit master plan process. We have been doing this process since fall of 2021, and it's finally coming to a close. It's been a great process, and we've been able to get a large amount of community feedback, which is wonderful. Thank you for the assist. And we're going to go through a couple of key things. Here we go. So I'm going to talk quickly about the process that we have done to get us to this point. Some transit supportive strategies that we have identified that are going to be a key components of implementing this plan, as well as the preferred transit service options that we have created for the city of Hood River, and then next steps. Okay, so again, as I mentioned, we started this fall of 2021. We have done stakeholder interviews. We've done a large amount of community outreach. And two different community surveys to get feedback from what our community wants and needs. And we had two advisory committees, a technical advisory committee, as well as a citizen advisory committee to help shepherd us through this process. And to ensure that we are hearing our different community members' voices. So we did a couple of, or several different community outreach surveys. So uh we did a couple of or several different community outreach surveys. Uh, our travel trainer slash mobility manager that we share with McCad uh did a wonderful job uh working with our different partner organizations from the community, such as the Next Door and One Community Health. Uh, also businesses such as Mercado Guadalajara, uh Pan Street Bakery, and then also uh was at the library. Uh, getting surveys from community members, but also asking and answering questions about uh people's needs and about public transit that's available in the region in general. Alright, so our plan looked at five different focus areas as well as some regional routes. Uh, for the regional routes, we did mostly just look at additional stops that are needed uh rather than uh different services like we did with our our focus areas. So that the different focus areas with Hood River East, Hood River West, Cascade Locks, uh lower Highway thirty five and then upper Highway thirty five. So there are different land use support strategies that we hired uh a land use consultant to look at, and they did a land use assessment. Uh, basically looking at areas uh where it would make sense for transit oriented development to occur uh within Hood River County. Uh, and the executive summary that was provided to you all, there's a uh a more in-depth review of all of those for the different focus areas. Um, if you have any questions, I'd love to discuss, uh but there's a lot of great information there and hopefully it will be found helpful. Uh, also stops and amenities. So going forward, we are really going to have three different types of stops. Uh, right now around town, you may know that there's a couple of different stops and some of them are not ideal, AKA sandwich boards, not my favorite. Um, so we are working on formalizing those stops, but also depending on the type of ridership, how many services serve those stops and how many different transit providers serve those stops. Uh, there will be more infrastructure. So there's a shelter stop and there's also mobility hubs that are just going to be, uh, I think that's going to be really wonderful and it'll help uh offer more transportation options uh to the community and allow for first mile, last mile solutions uh in the area where it doesn't make sense for transit to go into small little community areas. Um, alright, so at those mobility hubs, those are going to be site specific. They're really going to depend on what that community needs and is going to require additional uh uh research and feasibility studies to figure that out. Uh, so some of the things that we might offer at these different mobility hubs, again, depending on the area, uh will be park, or sorry, van pooling, um uh parking rides, uh bike share, car share, et cetera. Uh, and one thing I do want to highlight, this is an area that's been ever evolving um and with uh technology, it just is constantly changing. So there might be some additional tools in our toolbox within the next ten years that we'll be able to use and provide to community members. Alright, so when we are looking at city of Hood River, and again, I'm only going to go over this area at the other focus areas are in the executive summary. And again, if you would like to discuss those other spaces, uh please feel free to contact me. I'd love to to talk. Um, but so currently the Hood River, city of Hood River, we uh served by a circulator route. Uh, so that means it goes one direction and takes about forty five minutes to complete one lap. Uh, we will be, the long term solution is breaking that up into two. So Hood River East and Hood River West. Uh, for a short term solution, until that is implemented, we are actually going to be keeping our circulator route and then adding a linear route for AM and PM commute options to allow for more use cases. Uh, so it'll be easier to get from downtown in the Heights and it'll make it a quicker uh quicker ride. Um, but when we do to the longer term solution of breaking it into two, it's going to be two different linear routes. These are the proposed options. So for Hood River West, there we go. Um, it will serve some of the areas on the west side that we don't currently serve with our fixed route. So that'll be a wonderful option for residents. It also does offer connectivity at certain points at mobility hubs so that people can transfer to other routes, whether it's Hood River East or uh up at Rosars, it'll be the Upper Valley Route. Um, and then longer term, as different things happen, as development occurs, uh we're looking at potentially around the ten year mark, uh we'd be adding a service that would help address where we assume that development is going to happen. Um, and we'll hopefully work with developers in the cities to be incorporated in those plans. Uh, so transit is uh, you know, is part of the conversation at the beginning. Uh, the one thing I would like to note is that, again, these are, these are long term plans. So depending on what development occurs, different improvements, these might change a bit. It is our intent to be involved with the Ruston Trailhead um and to to help serve that spot with uh transit. So while it's not necessarily identified on here, the intent is it would be included. Uh, okay. So for any questions on Hood River West. Okay, so Hood River East. Uh, it's going to be very similar to the AM PM uh interim route that we will be doing until these the the Hood River route is split. Uh, but again, it it allows for more connectivity and more use cases uh between the Heights and Hood River, but then also more options to go between downtown and uh the west side or over by Walmart and Safeway and our transit office. Any questions on this one? Okay. Alright, so the our bottom line is that we're really looking at this ten year plan with different types of services to meet the needs of our community. Um, and we've kind of broken it up in in five different categories. Uh, and that's kind of represented in this big map of how and where those, we are envisioning those to go. Um, again, because of time restrictions, I'm not going to go into depth on this, but I do encourage you to to look and if you have any suggestions or would like to provide any comments, I would love to to hear. Alright, uh so for next steps, please ignore the submit comments by Friday, April seventh. Um, I did use this presentation from another presentation. Um, we are going to be doing two public hearings. They're going to be at the April nineteenth Board of Directors meeting as well as the May seventeenth. We'll be taking public comment at both meetings and we encourage anybody to uh who is interested to review. Uh, we have all of our documents on engagecatbus.org. Again, any feedback or public comment can be submitted to me um before the the public hearings or at the public hearings. Any questions?
Thank you, Amy, for being here and I appreciate uh your and Cat's efforts for intentional collaboration to ensure that we are having involvement of marginalized community members. I have a couple of questions that I wanted to ask. Um, really excited to see non emergency transportation and curious as to when that would potentially start.
You mean working with the any NEMT providers? So we are currently working with them. It is a little confusing. Um, and uh some other providers have been trying to work with them to to figure out how to get more involved and to ensure that um non-local organizations aren't necessarily doing those trips. It is a kind of a tough nugget to crack um in order to to make sure that we're we're spending public dollars appropriately and what all that includes.
Uh, also exciting to see routes to local heights. I think that will definitely help. There, I did have a question around plans to expand summer hours, especially during seasonal peak times. I did see information about expansion, but nothing around specific hours past six o'clock.
Yeah, so um are you talking for the city route or just like Upper Valley?
I would say city as opposed to Upper Valley, but I'm certain there's a need.
Yeah. Um, so right now we are doing the city route until seven fifteen. Um, and we're able to kind of adjust that uh based on ridership and um funding, frankly. Um, and as everybody is experiencing, it's really hard to kind of plan with rising costs um for fixing vehicles and and staff as well. Um, we are going through this next um biennium for funding. Um, and are uh, we are expecting it to be about that seven fifteen end time for City of Hood River and potentially extending that to seven forty five.
Thank you. How, and then just please let us know how the city can continue supporting any efforts that you may have to continue to expand services in our community.
I will let you guys know. I I really do appreciate the help you guys have given for our low income program um as well as the downtown passes. So appreciate that.
Excited to hear this, unless buses, if that comes through.
Yes.
Happens, so it actually gets delivered.
Yeah, so we have one. Um, and we're, you know, there's some growing pains with electric vehicles. Um, but then we also recently submitted um an application for uh I always get it mixed up, low no or no low um funding um to to electrify our fleet. And that would, if we are awarded those funds, um the next two to three years, we will have an almost electrified.
Makes the budgeting, budgeting process easier because you don't have to uh control fuel, fuel costs as much. Um, my question is on ridership. What are the biggest threats that you see to achieving goals you want to achieve ridership wise across the system?
Um, I think it's uh continue to um show different community members how transit can be incorporated into their their lives. Um, fixed route services is still fairly new to Hood River County. Um, it is, and it's not something that um everybody is necessarily used to, right? Um, it's not every, uh, some people come from big cities where it exists and and then some uh community members are from here and have not had fixed route or access to public transit. Um, and so I think it's just making sure our services work for different types of use cases and making sure that people feel comfortable using it. Um, one thing, again, I mentioned the travel trainer and mobility manager that we share with McCad. A large part of her focus is working with different demographics uh to ensure that they feel comfortable with using transit and how we can make them feel more comfortable, whether it's travel training, uh whether it's uh changing our um outreach materials, whether it's changing our outreach tactic. Um, all of those to ensure that different community members feel comfortable using transit because it's not necessarily someone that ever, something that everybody feels comfortable using.
Thanks, Amy. Um, I don't see mention of the trolley in in the in the document.
Very good question. Um, so that is something, a seasonal thing, and yes, that is something that is missing in the document. And I'll I'll make sure we update that.
It's still a plan.
It's still a plan.
Nice. I I have a suggestion for that, but I'll I'll tell you.
Okay, sounds good.
My only remaining question, I think, is is related and thank you for coming. Uh, this, yeah, I really geek out on this kind of stuff myself. Uh, moved back uh a couple of years ago and I used frequently used public transportation in the last city that I lived in, quite miss it. Um, been able to take the trolley, et cetera. So um around Ruthen. Uh, so I think one of the big challenges we're going to have is a lot of cyclists coming uh you know, trying to minimize that traffic, at least until we have the infrastructure. So you you made mention of, you know, uh incorporating, you know, ways to put cycles on the buses, et cetera. I'm just wondering if there's been any thought into, you know, how many cycles can be accommodated there? And I know this isn't you, so uh more or less O dot. But um, do we, are we, are we going to be in a position where people are encouraged to to take cat from there, to leave their cycles? Should we be encouraging them to put the cycles on the the buses? Can the buses accommodate enough? What are your thoughts around all that?
So very good question. Um, the intent is to ensure that we can beef up the amount of bicycles that we can put on our bicycles. And I think they're talking about a number of different solutions. Um, potentially, I think bicycle carting there, but but also the intent is to to make it so they can hop on to the cat bus and then get to where they need to go. Um, so we've, there's several other providers who have added um additional trailers or other things so that they can accommodate more bicycles. So that's something that we would be looking at. Yeah.
I think everyone else covered any questions, so I did just want to say thank you. It's been really nice to see Cat, you know, expanding and flourishing over the last few years. It's super helpful for the community. So appreciate the work.
Thank you so much. And my email is amy@ca transit.org. Uh, I thought so.
I'd love to see some uh back looking information about like how many people took the bus to Meadows and stuff like that. So don't put it together for me, but there must be something like that if you.
We do. Um, I can send it along, but uh every month we provided in our board meeting materials that I can send it along to you. Uh, we had a wonderful year with Meadows. And we got, I think, a large amount of folks that haven't used transit before used it.
Uh, moving on to Jessica. Our alumnus, alumna. Thanks for coming, you guys.
Thank you.
There you go.
When Abby, uh, Jessica, can you mention Abby? I just got a hold in here. Let me pay attention to that. Thank you. Go ahead, Jesse. Great. I didn't know how that worked. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Uh, it's nice to see everybody again and to be on the side of the table. Um, so this is just um an opportunity and thank you to Abby Gale for inviting me to share an update of what Mid Columbia Economic Development District McCad does. Um, I was trying to think, uh, it'd be interesting at some point to do the math, though we probably have like forty different lines of business, right? And so it's just, I don't have an elevator speech. Uh, you get thirty minutes today, so. Um, so we have existed since nineteen sixty nine to promote the creation of family wage jobs, the diversification of the economic base and the growth retention um and development of business and industry within our five county district, which is Hood River County, Wasco, Sherman in Oregon, and then Skidmore and Clickatat in Washington um with our roughly ninety thousand residents. Um, and those counties, really, they came together in nineteen sixty nine, recognizing that the economic fates are tied together. We are governed by a twenty-two member Board of Directors. We have a representative from each of the county commissions. Um, a who then the county commissions appoint a representative of the cities of the county, which we are glad to have counselors and other on. Um, we have a representative of each of the the Oregon and the Washington ports, the Oregon and Washington chambers. And then there's eight private sector representatives representing one of the key industries in the region. We kind of group our work into the three areas of focus, business assistance, technical assistance and regional coordination. And going into depth, we, on the business assistance, um, I'll I'll talk a little bit more about lending, but um we do, we have provided some business trainings. We usually do those in partnership with the Small Business Development Center. Um, we don't have any of those um, that expertise in-house, but that's where we've been able to write grants, for example, to partner with the Next Door, the Small Business Development Center, to provide some more business trainings. Um, we, in the industry cluster development, that's where we bring together certain industries to talk about how we can focus on that industry to help them grow. And that's where we have the Gorge Tech Alliance focused on the tech. Um, we have also in the past helped the Wine Growers Association get formed. We have some with renewable energy. Um, but on the business lending program, we do have, we manage three uh business lending funds. McCad has its own funds, the Oregon Investment Board and our Hood Economic Alliance. And we all really play the same role, but just have different areas of geographic focus. Um, I'm going to touch on those a little bit, but we do also have an attainable housing loan fund, which is unique to the Oregon side of our district and was something that was created with Regional Solutions Funds. And we've been able to fund um some of the projects in Hood River, for example, that go up to a hundred twenty percent of area median income, like the Leeward Apartments, um, those newer ones. Um, we also had been involved in the beginning with the The kids and beverage development up on Belmont um. To help them get started, but then they transitioned out. So on the business lending program, this is, and this is one of the main um asks when I do this presentation, because a lot of what we do. There's not really a good way to engage with us on a regular basis, except for the business lending program. That's where you are all need to go and tell all of your friends and, you know, uh associates that they need to reach out to us for some business support. We work really closely again with the Small Business Development Center to help those folks that have. A new business or a business idea and don't know really where to get that funding from, to get a loan from a bank, for example, you're gonna need um to. Show profitability over a certain number of months. And how can you do that if you're a new business? So that's where we can up funds, like Bodum Restaurant across the street, um Adeska is a new patisserie in town that's really delicious. Um and then these are some other examples of uh we fund all types of businesses. Uh medical, professional, real estate, hospitality, manufacturing. Um McCad's loan program started in the eighties, and so these are some of those statistics, three hundred and twenty-two loans, twenty point eight million. It's a revolving fund, so as those loans get paid off, then we just can lend it back out again. Um Oregon Investment Board, so McCad's loan program funds our whole five counties. The Oregon Investment Board just focuses on the portion that's within the Oregon side of the scenic area, so that little strip of Multnomah, Hood River and Wasco Counties. Um and that uh pot of money, for example, has funded Lucy's Flowers, uh Rommel's, Brigham Fish Products is a great. Uh great success story in Cascade Locks. If folks haven't been there, they have really delicious fish. Um and so that Oregon Investment Board, their funds came originally from when the scenic area was created and there was an allocation. Um and those funds again have been revolved, so we've given out over um fifteen point six million, excuse me, ten million. Of lending, but it's leveraged fifteen point six million of private funds. And then the Mount Hood Economic Alliance is, their funding is focused on Hood River, Wasco and Plaquemines Counties. This is a fund that we've only um a few years ago took over the management of, it's existed since the nineties. But one of my favorite pieces about this fund is the fund, the dollars originally came from the state. But it's been long enough that the dollars essentially have been washed, and so we asked this board if they would be interested in considering providing loans to ITIN holders. So folks that have an individual taxpayer investment identification number. So instead of a a social security number, um but they have DACA or they have a visa, they have a successful business, but they cannot re um get bank financing. And they also are ineligible for our other loan programs that came from the federal government. So we've uh funded one loan so far with this and are excited to try to serve this part of our community a little bit better. The second uh line of business, technical assistance, and this is where we um provide grant administration support. This uh picture, Mid Columbia Center for Living in Wasco County, that's where we helped with the those complex labor standards is um, as you know, it takes. A lot of red tape to administer those federal grants, and we have some expertise in-house. We have been able to partner with the city of Hood River, for example, with your storm stormwater project. So um my staff, um Jackie Shai is working really closely with Haley to help um administer that grant, but then also train her so that then she would be able to do it for the city. We um other examples, Crystal Springs um Irrigation District, we've done a lot of work with the city of Cascade Locks. So we have experience with USDA grants, EDA, um DEQ, a lot of experience there with grant writing and grant development. Um on the economic development services, this is where we kind of serve as the county level economic development staff. In Wasco and Sherman Counties, we serve that on a larger scale. In Hood River County, we do help support the Hood River Economic Development Group. Which is the staff level leads for all of the key economic development partners, like the city and the ports and the county. Um and to just work on um small projects, keep the county moving forward. And this is also where we, for example, are contracted to administer the Hood River um Enterprise Zone. On project management services, this includes support for the Hood River Energy Council, and that's another way that we engage with the city and appreciate your support for the work there. Um this is also where we do some of our mobility management services, remote forms of transportation beyond single occupancy vehicles, so some of that partnership that Amy was mentioning with Cat. Um that third leg, the regional coordination, this focuses on if there's challenges or opportunities that impact communities across the five counties. Um such as renewable energy development, broadband access or utilization or transportation and mobility services. And um some of these samples here on that transportation piece, so we do um. Convene uh the county, the five county level transit providers in a group called the Gorge Transit Alliance. And they, we have been pulling those folks together for probably almost, almost fifteen years. And through that, we've been able to have a lot of great conversation about, let's make a website that makes it a little bit easier for folks to use the different transit services across the region. Let's come up with the gorge pass, this one provider pass that can serve um multiple transit providers. And we have been continuing to work with this group. At this point, we are working on, it's called the Gorge Regional Transit Strategy. So it's really looking at what's that future for transit in the region, and then how do we make that happen? Um where we are right now in that process is, we have that vision defined and are working on that implementation phase. And one of the recommendations is coming out of that is to form a regional transportation advisory board. That potentially would have um representation from the city on that, recognizing that. Um the cities are where a lot, there's a lot more interest in transit, for example, than at the the county board of commissioners. And then, of course, the the big piece in that regional planning is the development of the comprehensive economic development strategy, our our SEDs. Um and this is where we. We pull this together every five years. As one of the key strategies that we are tasked to do by the US Economic Development Administration. So we are actually designated by the US EDA and receive regular planning a grant, planning grant that requires us to develop the strategy every five years and then work on its implementation. And this um that EDA planning grant is another way that the city engages with McCad. We do have um local assessments based on a per capita that help us match that funding grant. So this was just adopted a year ago. And we do this just recognizing that it's a really successful way to engage our community leaders, to leverage the involvement of the private sector and really establish that blueprint for strong regional collaboration. This slide just shows the the different sections that were developed in the strategy. I'm not gonna go into it all in a lot of detail. I know you had in your packet, so you could have evolved. Read it, but we did it over um seven public sessions with more than a hundred participants through the series, where each session really built on the last one. And is then represented that way in the plan. We had local and tribal governments, regional partners, ports, chambers, legislators, state and federal partners, businesses and individuals. And then we also had an online survey, but then we did engage, this time around was the first with the Nextdoor to do some focus groups. Um targeted on the Latino community and the Native American community, to really hear we, how we can better address their economic development concerns. The. Um two of the the themes that we explored throughout the process was resilience, which um actually both of these are are now uh requirements of the EDA. But um not something that they were required at the time. And so that's where um resilience is something EDAs has asked us to be looking at for a few years now, just recognizing that we are more increasingly. Experiencing um economic shocks from the pandemic to wild fires and other climate change. Issues that are impacting our businesses and communities, and how do we make sure that we're planning in a way that makes us uh more likely to be successful when we have those? And then equitable outcomes is a piece that we really wanted to pull in to just talk about how not everyone in the region has equal access to our strong regional economy. And how do we address that and fill in those gaps? Um of course, the strategy was developed with this uh background of COVID nineteen. We ended up with all of the sessions being virtual, which was unfortunate because the networking is usually some of the best part. Um and we also usually do business um business tours, so. Um but that was the the background that we had, and we really, we tied in also this COVID nineteen impact assessment that we had completed earlier. Um so that was woven into the strategy. Um we did a SWOT analysis, as you know, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, and really identified. Where um we could build on those um those opportunities to take this plan to the next level. I don't know that there's really anything um surprising here um to all of you. So from all that, um that SWOT analysis and um all that background research of um the demographic data. We came up with this vision for a bi-state Mid Columbia region with a resilient, thriving, sustainable rural economy. That supports equitable access to diverse business opportunities that act in harmony with the area's unique qualities, values, cultural and natural resources. I like to joke that we got all the words in there. Um there was a, there was a lot that that the group really wanted to put in there, so we got them all. Um and then from the vision, we built these four goal areas for strong businesses, robust workforce, resilient infrastructure and powerful collaboration. And each one of those has its own goal statement. Um so this is the one, for example, for businesses. And in the plan, we identified key industries to focus on and help those in particular grow, including natural resources and value-added agriculture. Manufacturing and especially beverage manufacturing, high-tech and especially unmanned systems. Healthcare, utilities and renewable energy, and then arts, culture, tourism and recreation. And so this strong business action plan has strategies then that go along with those to try to help each of those grow and um generate more jobs for the region. The robust workforce action plan, this is the first time that childcare has shown up in the development of our of our SEDs. Um the problem with affordable housing has been in a part of the SEDs for a number of iterations, but this was the first time again that. The childcare rose to the surface, and as I said, you know, being developed in that COVID nineteen pandemic is, which just exacerbated and highlighted the problem. That we were all facing already, really, with the childcare situation. Um so this talks about the needs to achieve that workforce goal statement. Um including educational opportunities from pre-K to twelfth grade and higher education, basic skills training, quality workplaces for our employees. And then um the need for accessible childcare, so that we have greater workforce participation and supporting economic growth. The resilient infrastructure action plan is the largest one because underneath it has all the um different pieces of infrastructure. So we have um, we have water and wastewater, we have affordable housing. We have broadband and renewable energy systems that are renewable, resilient and efficient. And then the transportation section itself has its own mini-goal statement for a safe, efficient, equitable and accessible regional transportation system. To enhance our livability, resilience and economic vitality. So just recognizing that all these different pieces of the infrastructure system are really needed to have that strong, those strong business um and the strong workforce economy. And then the last goal, the powerful regional collaboration, really just sets um this vision for how we can work together to achieve the other goal statements. So recognizing that we already have a lot of really strong networks, especially in the gorge, we do have a good culture of working well together, but how do we just continue to build on that? And the plan uh from there goes on, has evaluation metrics to show that we're making success, uh that we're achieving success and making progress on the plan. Um it also has lots of um appendices with data, um demographic and economic data for all of us that like to geek out. I did include, um so this piece of the plan is updated every year, and you also participate in this. Where we ask each of the counties to come up with their top ten economic development projects, and then those are fed to the McCad board that adopts a top ten Oregon and a top ten Washington list. So you can see um for the city of Hood River, the Rand Road Housing Development um continues on the list, the elevated sewer line replacement. Um and then those are the two for the the city, but there are some other projects impacting the city, particularly the ports projects. Um the Washington, so these these lists generally have a lot of those infrastructure projects, water and wastewater, um broadband, housing, energy projects. Um because we need, as I mentioned, we need to have those to try to achieve the other goals. A lot of people were involved in developing the plan, um sponsors, lots of committee and board members. Um so where can you find it? GorgeEconomy.org is the interactive website that we set up for the plan. Uh I didn't bring any copies with me, but we do have some um nice printed copies as well. If that's something that you really like to have, let me know and we can get them to you. One way that you can continue to engage with the plan is we do have every November, our annual economic symposium, and that's just an opportunity. To bring the community together again for that networking, to hear an update from our Oregon and Washington economists on where the economy is going. What do those trends look like for the year and for the future? And then we also generally have a uh panel, an industry panel focused on one of those key industries. And so here are some pictures from last November where we had a renewable energy panel. So here's your call to action. Tell your friends, especially about our business loan program. We have a lot of money to get out. Um if you wanna keep hearing about what we have going on, um we do have a monthly newsletter and and that's it. I'm just happy to take any questions.
Yeah, thank you for being here today. Appreciate your and McCad's efforts. Um page or slide sixty-four talks about that we recognize that not everyone has the same level of access and awareness to the resources that could really help set them up. So can you talk to us or just walk us through the marketing vision or the strategies to increase that level of awareness?
Yes, so. What is the, what didn't say at the top?
It says themes explored. It says outcomes, and it lists the three of those that were discussed. I don't really see the what was identified, but recognizing again that not everyone has access and awareness, what is, what does that look like?
Yes, so what we really learned from the this, the Latino and the Native American focus groups. Um we're kind of woven through the plan, and something I should mention that the plan being developed by the community is really for the community. It doesn't have, for example, um McCad is not responsible for achieving all of the things in the plan. There's um large sections of it where we are not connected to making those things happen. It's just um, we can't do all of the things, right? So but that's where it's, how can we help our partners like the Nextdoor or Columbia River Intertribal Fish Commission to help meet those needs? Um what was interesting in the Native American focus groups and outreach, what the message from that was really, how can we help them achieve? Basic level services at those end move sites like electricity and broadband and running water. Um how can we help with um job training opportunities for their youth? So that um. You know, where I naively was going into it, like, let's talk about economic development up here, and they were like, no, we really just need those basic needs met. Um and the the Latino business community that the Nextdoor pulled together, um there was a lot of talk about um how could we keep bringing them together? There was like a Latino uh business chamber, for example, that was regularly meeting, um and how can we help them access more um. Resources, so uh local, state or federal resources that are out there.
Thank you for just calling that out. I think it's important that that we call out it again for additional awareness. We we think of third world countries as the ones not having access to water, but go to any of the end move sites here, even across the river. And there's folks that don't have any sort of running water. So during the pandemic, everyone was like, wash your hands. And for some communities, that that wasn't even a possibility. So I appreciate your efforts to highlight that and to figure out what are the systems that need to be created in order to create that level of of access there and and support for those communities. Um you know, as I look at Lake Taco, one of the first frickin' waters down on Oak Street, it's really exciting to see. The diversity amongst business owners and and the idea to continue scaling that, because there are programs like yours that that really can support to some extent. Um so again, just thank you for your efforts and appreciate the collaboration. Um if there's anything that I can personally do to support these efforts for those. Um, if there's anything that I can personally do to support these efforts for those communities, please uh, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Right ones?
Sure.
Yeah, I listened to you.
Sure. What, what's the best, we, we, we city council, the city can work locally, what's the best way that we locally can uh, have our community and ourselves engaged to reach these regional solutions that were all very important?
Um, I think the city actually does a really great job. And I think, you know, your staff is, works well, reaches out to the other communities to talk about partnering. Um, I think that um, things like that, the Hood River Economic Development Group is like, is a good way for people to get together and talk about what they're working on and, and how to partner. I don't know if I have a better answer than, that I think you're doing a good job.
We're okay to hear that occasionally.
Right, yes.
Uh, do you, you need? Higher level, would it make sense for us to um, voice support on statewide initiatives or things that would?
One of the things that we um, had, we had received one-time state funding for uh, more grant writing systems. Um, and we haven't been able to help the city a whole bunch with that, but um, that's something that we are really interested in continuing. Um, we do a little bit of that, uh, mostly through, for example, like the WASCO and the Sherman County contracts that we have. Um, and we've, we can be contracted with, right, to do one-time things. But to have somebody on staff all the time that's focused at um, keeping an eye out for federal uh, or state grants and connecting those with local projects, um, helping write those applications, um. That's something that we've seen the value of. Again, we've only had the money for not quite even a year. And we are advocating right now for that funding to be continued to the economic development districts. Oregon's actually covered by economic development districts across each of the counties. Um, and I could share some more information to Abigail to pass along to you if you did want to reach out to a legislator.
Thanks, Jessica, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have a public hearing. That you, Rich? Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, hoping this is quick and simple, it's a revision to an existing sewer use ordinance that was uh, approved by council in October of twenty twenty-one. Um, which was part of our MPDES permit, which was twenty twenty. Uh, so basically, uh, the revision is for a pH increase. Um, while we're doing our industrial pretreatment program, taking a deep dive into that. Um, what Jacobs and Windsor recognized that um, our treatment plant, the pH levels have been historically low. And so the hope is that by increasing the pH limit uh, from nine to ten point five, that the four industries can deposit, is the right term, more pH into the treatment plant, and uh, that would help balance. Uh, the, the goal is to get a balance rather than low pH. Um, so that was the basis behind the pH revision. Um, we had already talked with the industries, uh, they're all on board with it, um, no heartburns or anything. Uh, so that's that. Um, I will say I do need to make an amendment. Um, I think it's page one sixty-nine of your packet, I don't know how you guys have this formatted, but uh, it's essentially page nine of thirty-nine on the twelve point oh six uh, sewer use ordinance. Yeah, so it's on page nine of thirty-nine, so item number five, uh, says wastewater having a temperature greater than one fifty. Yeah, so that actually needs to be one forty Fahrenheit. Uh, if you look at the table, two pages after, on page eleven, uh, there's a category, it says temperature, and it says uh, forty degrees, blah, 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 and then it says sixty degrees, one forty. So that was missed, uh, when we had put that in there, so just requesting that amendment. Um, yeah, so that's, that's the pH. Uh, there is also a resolution which adopts that table of local limits. Um, that was not in the initial sewer ordinance, but it was something that was required from DEQ. And so uh, Windsor had contracted out with Jacobs Engineering, which is separate than the treatment plant folks, uh, to come up with these limits that you see on that table on page eleven of the ordinance, uh, with the arsenic, cadmium, cadmium and all that things. And so these were the limits that were established. Everything's been approved by DEQ, so I don't want to say formality, but it's it's pretty much it. These are going to be our limits going forward, so.
Before you begin, because we're going into a public hearing, I think there's a script that you need to get us started.
Oh, was I supposed to wait for that? It's my first ordinance, sorry.
Twenty seventy-five, yes. Let it be known, this is the time scheduled for a public hearing. An ordinance twenty seventy-five, amending title twelve, Public Utilities, Chapter twelve dot oh six, Uniform Requirements for the Use of City-Owned Treatment Works Regarding Pretreatment of Wastewater of the U. Hood River Municipal Code to Make the City's Pretreatment Requirements and Procedures for Wastewater Pretreatment Consistent with Current State and Federal Law. We will now hear the city staff report, Rich, right? Uh, and now are we ready for public testimony or? That's, it's okay with you, Richard, if, is, is there anyone here to make public testimony on, on this, on this topic? Okay, if no public testimony, go to the next thing. Uh, the public hearing is now closed, the city council will now deliver it in my own order. So I got a little tiny bit famous about the seven french fries in a blender, about the suspended sock. What's, what's an example of a, of a high pH item that the brewer is going to be excited about?
Hmm.
It's not, not to be a pop quiz, it's, I, does anybody know this?
That's a good question. I don't know. Would you know, Megan?
But anyway, but I heard you say that this is well-received by them.
It has been, yes.
We can put our high pH stuff in, it'll make our, our production more efficient, is that it?
Correct, and uh, I do, one of the industries had mentioned that years ago, before the pH increase, they had invested in things to keep the pH down, so they'd already invested, so uh, this doesn't help them much, but this ultimately is a good thing, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I was talking to Steph before this, this is a portion of what we heard that engineering report regarding this, about local limits, which I think a bit like cadmium and stuff like that. And this is about pH, this is not about some of those other TSS and BID, BOID.
Correct.
So that's, that's to come yet.
That is to come, yeah, and it's a little slower than hoped, uh, there's been some medical issues and some other things involved. And, and after we had met with the industries, after that big presentation, we had kind of gone back and reevaluated some things. So this was the big first step, uh, this was really supposed to happen, not the pH, but the local limits themselves, were supposed to be in like a year ago, so. Um, yeah, so that, that'll be coming, yeah.
Interesting, um, so I know that uh, lower pH is bad for like, ice. Is, is there any such risk with higher pH? I, I don't know any, bring your money.
I have not heard of any.
Chemistry just near decades.
And you're right, I know, I know lower pH is not good. Uh, the good thing is they're all down there, so it's like a short distance to the plant, so like, in theory, it's not running all the way through our system, but I, I'm not aware of higher pH, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I can just chime in real quick.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Biological organisms usually live.
Tim, can you aim your camera, we can't see you.
I'm sorry.
Your camera's a little high, can you lower so we can see your friendly face? Great, thanks.
The biological organisms usually live within a range of pHs. So there's, there's pHs that are too low, and then the pHs in there are too hot. And it's different for a lot of different things.
And what about the industry, Tim? Can you imagine how the industry generates one of those upper?
That I don't have knowledge of.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
Sure.
Thanks, thanks for chiming in, please do chime in, it's, I really can, you know, watch, great, uh, Mayor.
Um, I think I just wanted to clarify something, page two oh two of the packets, the, the chart. And I assume there's just a formatting issue, but um, ammonia is no limit adopted? Or is ammonia the hundred milligrams per liter total, or somehow both?
We have, I didn't print the whole thing, so ammonia. Yeah.
I, I assume something just got screwy in word, because that's a classic.
Oh, yeah, I think the formatting got, you're right. Well, in the clean version, in the, it says no limit adopted, so.
For ammonia.
For ammonia.
That doesn't seem like the obvious choice.
No. Uh, I will have to clarify. Yeah. I can clarify that.
Uh, one, can I chime in a bit here, Rich? It looks, it's a formatting error, the line slices through the ammonia standard on the table on two oh two. And so that hundred milligrams is supposed to go with the fats, oils and greases. That's how it's stated on the table on one seventy-two.
Thanks, Dan.
And, and in response to your question, Mayor, um, in the past, we did have problems with um, really low pH being discharged by one of the industrial um, uh, uh, wastewater dischargers, and low pH is acidic, high pH is base. And it was a cleaning solutions that were um, being inadvertently kind of put into the system. And, you know, they use acids to clean out some of their uh, equipment. So that's an example of inadvertent discharge of a very low pH. Um, if something is a super-strong base, like uh, Li is a super-strong base, I don't, I don't really know what, how that fits into any of their processes.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, that was a year and a half ago.
At least.
That was negative, so.
Sorry.
So that, are we feeling, we got clarity that that formatting is not going to change the intent? Great, okay, so let's make sure we don't get the two oh two.
I guess maybe, yeah, when the clean resolution is signed or whatever happens.
We get the formatting, yeah.
Make it clear for folks. Thank you.
This is one of those instances where now we've talked about it. So uh, we are now in, in deliberation, uh, with the goal of help me remember, Abigail, we, we, we're looking for a motion this evening, adoption, right? Great, okay, who would I start?
I move to hear ordinance twenty seventy-five, once I tend to the first time by title only, and to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero four, establish local limits for wastewater discharge with the edit down to a hundred and forty degrees as opposed to a hundred and fifty.
Moved by the Paulson, second by Saunders, okay.
Uh, now, that doesn't, you, you don't still have plenty of time for talking, it's, uh, discussion. Good. I'm glad we're doing this system-wide on everything.
Yeah, we've done, we've talked about this plenty already, it's not like we're, just, just turning over the first page. Uh, unless there's further discussion, I'll call a question, and now this is uh, an ordinance, is a roll call, Jim?
I'll do that under Steve Porter.
Okay, so in this case, it's just uh, all in favor?
Hi.
But the record showed that Zoom, Zoom Coonahan said I, uh, all opposed. Chair votes, I, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich, thank you.
Thank you.
Pass along to all the consulting and Twitter people, that's all. I mean, this is a gigantic system that we in the city own and operate, and
Yeah.
it makes a huge difference, the budget ain't happy, ain't nobody happy.
Correct, absolutely, thank you.
Uh, that takes us to the consent agenda.
I would move we approve the consent agenda.
By Saunders?
Second.
Second by Paulson, you guys, okay, working it, good job. Uh, any, any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor?
Ayes.
Aye.
Aye.
Coonahan votes aye on Zoom, opposed, chair votes aye, motion passes, action items, project list and district size.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy to be here tonight, as we continue to talk about the Westside Urban Renewal Districts. You know, we've been talking about this for about a year, and I heard from Council a desire to really get to review and really affirm a project list uh, and a district size, so bring those two questions to you tonight. Um, as we go through this process, uh, we'll firm this up that we anticipate having a public uh, hearing, or not, a public open house, a probably virtual sometime in May, so I have the opportunity for the public to really react to the list that you give us, uh, and then come back to you this summer for final uh, confirmation of the project list, the district size, other details as we put the plan together, which then, we then take the plan back to all of the taxing districts for any final comments from them. So looking for something tonight, sorry, go ahead, Counsel.
Uh, so I have a question before we get into this, do we, we need to move to authorize the Microsoft Office thing first?
I think that was part of the uh,
It's in the consent agenda, but we also have a suggested motion in the packet.
Oh.
For that.
Thanks for noticing, great, I read it as being a.
That happens frequently, and we usually just do it in consent still.
Oh, still consent.
Thanks.
I think the, the motion is there, if someone shows to take it off the agenda for discussion, then you have an independent motion.
Great.
Great, thank you, sorry to jump ahead like that. Uh, so that's our process, looking for your feedback review uh, and a formal motion tonight on the project list and the district size, knowing that we'll have a public um, open house to get public comment uh, sometime this spring, and then we'll come back to you for like the final, final uh, plan in uh, probably June or July.
I was talking with Steph this weekend, there were some reasons why we wanted to pull off the actual acreage determination for there's just a few more final points to get worked out on that, so if, if it's okay with everybody, won't, won't finalize acreage, but the project list, like those budget numbers are, that, that's the next step for us, if that's okay with you.
And I, maybe, I think this would be great to get time for the next time we would talk about this, but for like the recommended acres versus what we were presented with the feasibility study, I'd love, you know, there was some gap between total amount we would be able to accrue and, and projected cost at this point. I'd love to know what that gap has gone down to if we're pulling these acres out, just so we have that information.
And we've not gone back and recalculated that dollar amount, but we are comfortable that this acreage would do the projects that we've got. You might remember our, the feasibility study showed about eighty-seven million dollars in projects, and uh, um, a maximum debt of about a hundred and three was our comfort level, but up to a hundred and sixty. So we think that the four hundred and ten acres does accommodate the project list as presented.
Still love to know the gap.
Yeah, but we can ask our consultant to go back and fine-tune that and present you with new numbers.
Okay.
Um, I'm looking at Dustin and see if that's a, okay.
Great, okay. That, should you say, on your bid?
I think so, I guess my question then with Counselor Saunders' form uh, question is, do you have enough information tonight to give staff some direction, or do you want this to come back uh, in a couple of weeks with more analysis?
Let's see. So.
I have a question about the project list, and my understanding is that there's project categories that, that go into the formation of the district, and we actually have, even though this is good and important now, we have a lot of flexibility in what we actually spend money on, as long as it's within a category. Is that, is that a true statement? So transportation, here's a list of transportation things. Um, but if, as time goes on, the situation is this, and, and we can say, well, that road really should be over here. And that, is, is that a true statement?
Absolutely, I mean, well, the road, this should go over here versus that is really a transportation system plan. But, but the funding, you know, changing the priorities, adding projects, dropping projects, as long as you stay within um, you know, the general district size and within the maximum indebtedness, it's pretty easy to change the project list. In fact, you know, I think it's good that it had that flexibility, it's really hard to predict twenty-five years in the future what our priorities might be. So it allows us that flexibility.
Yeah, good, so I, so I have a comment on the list when we get to that, but I'm also like, we really, this, this is sort of us, our best guess in, in twenty twenty-three and
Right.
and twenty twenty-eight, or twenty thirty-eight, or forty-eight, things, things.
Completely.
Thanks.
That's about the problems. I have a question about the problem.
Yeah.
Uh,
A light at exit sixty-two westbound. Uh. I wonder why we would reinvest money in a light there as opposed to whatever. A roundabout at Mount Ascade would leave a lot more of that traffic flow than a a light would necessarily at that exit. Uh. So instead of. Splitting our resources between two intersections, um, I, it's split maybe, it might make more sense to me. To um. Uh. Focus on the, on the long-term solutions, these intersections?
Looking Justin, see if he's got feedback, these are all taken from the transportation system plan.
I don't need answered right now.
Okay, do you remember what project number that is as you look at the list?
B one.
One and two, okay.
Uh. Also, MB two A, why would there be an exclusive right turn lane onto eighty-four eastbound? Um. Going out there all the time, traffic free flows through there, both right and straight, headed west on Cascade, um, curious about that.
Hold on, say it, looks like Dustin's, oh, I'm really getting, I'm getting ready, okay, good.
And my list is what it is, um. Uh, West Side Drive, if it's three lanes, are we creating a strode? Um. And uh cutting a neighborhood in half, long term? Um.
Did you say?
Road, I did.
What, sorry, which road are you talking about on that one?
Uh, West Side Drive, the new one that would go from. Road, road is a combination of the street and road, it's basically like putting, depending on how you want to look at it. Either West Cascade now or um even the heights out of. Uh, where Cherry used to be, Tilly James, yeah, Tucker, wow, uh, a cop somewhere between those two versions. It's road, it's not very community or pedestrian friendly places, really cuts an area in half. Um. So yeah, that was a question, and then uh MV eleven, uh, what I've heard. Out in the community is they're big on roundabouts and not lights. Um. And next one, P one dot one. Um, on West of Drive, there are two private landlords out there who have already built sidewalks, um. Is the city going to build sidewalks for everybody else who has already put them in down that street? If so, what are they gonna do about the two people who have already built sidewalks out there? Hmm. Um. Then the next, just clarification in future, regarding land acquisition, as mentioned, plans, uh, there's no. Thought or price listed at all, uh, price per acres or units on those two to go things. So that's very amorphous uh topic. And then the. Not project list related question I had, but related to the project list and these projects is, would it make sense? Uh, to effectuate these projects faster if we also considered, um. And this is not necessarily discussed right now, uh, annexation of sections of the West Side and brought them in. Uh, in order to fund a lot of this construction build out as well. That was my list.
Thank you, Counsel.
I wanna make sure that I've got my brain around this right way, is this a coverage mission that Abigail and the council wants to be, I think it's, is this the right thing?
What other, I guess, I thought this was what we were.
Yeah, I'm looking for those reactions and questions, that's great.
Uh, Mark or Megan?
Um, I'll, I'll just go through the list similar to her granted, um. It, it does give me heartburn to spend seven million dollars on the O dot interchange, but my understanding is, is that. We are told what to do there and not, not, uh, we have a choice in what to do, but it gives me heartburn, just putting it out there. Um. I. The next thing's, so that was on MV one, and and there, there's a handful of the MVs, like widening roads and stuff that. I, I, I will trust the pros at saying what, when we need to do that and hopefully we can keep the scale to be. But it could be.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in, in P one through, in that whole section and parks and trails. Uh, I interpret this as, as construction of, um. And I, I hope that. That. Getting the, act, you know, the getting the easements and buying, you know, acquiring land is, it's sort of a, you know, we should. Have that be as much to the front as possible, it, I don't know if this, this seems to imply. Uh, a prioritization and therefore a schedule, and and I would say that, you know, acquisition of stuff is. Way up in the front and then we can construct things and stuff as time goes on, so I, I, I'm not quite sure how. That, um, gets reflected in the plan, um. And then, you know. I am not against doing some of the modifications, whether it's the ones that Claudia brought up or or other ones. But I, I think that that's in the future flexibility as opposed to um specifics to to this. List, so.
Thanks.
Um. So I'll start with like questions for the MV three, Mount Adams Cascade out to Wine Country. Um, you know, where it says reevaluate if we end up getting the roundabout, um. And I, I assume this list is not in priority or or.
That's right.
Um, and so like we would not be doing that one until.
Right.
Okay, um, and then in our actual plan, will we have cost estimates for a bunch of these blank ones?
To the, to the best of our ability.
I mean, aware their estimates.
Right, the great thing about transportation system plan is it has dollars, however they're dated. Um, the other ones coming from the master parks, the inter, the multi-jurisdictional parks plan, it has no cost estimates for anything, so. We. Yeah, it'd be okay.
Um, and then I feel like this is more a comment than a question, but um. I feel like nothing in the Parks and Trails surprised me except that the construction of sidewalk on West Cliff was a top priority, um, because it's not for bicycles. It's really not going to serve very many members of the community, given that's not a significant link between anything that I, I think the majority of the community. Uses now or will be using even when Ruthston Park is there. Um, as the node, and so I'm wondering if swapping that out for, you know, finishing out some sidewalks that are, I think, more predominantly used for transportation. So I don't know exactly what fits in the map of, you know, whether that's Rand Road or Cascade or May Street or Frankton, like. Something more core to transport within that district feels more relevant than. A sidewalk that I think even when the bike systems there won't be highly used because it's not for bikes, um. So that's maybe my plea to the rest of council of like, that just felt a little out of place compared to the rest, um. And I agree, we can change things, but I'd really, I'm not super comfortable having added our existing plan as a proposal. Compared to everything else in here, um.
So actually, you're talking about striking.
Mm-hmm.
And swapping something, I mean, like that's two million dollars we could use for some other, I think, more critical sidewalk, we know sidewalk is an issue for many people in the community.
Yeah.
For getting to schools and other community nodes, I don't see most people saying they really need to get to the historic highway as the primary node.
Great.
Yeah, to piggyback on that, there are some other sidewalks around town that are more highly trafficked that can really use those funds. One in particular comes to mind is right off of May thirteenth.
That one is probably outside of our, may, this.
Yes, this, this one, but.
I was thinking of what was in the district, but yes, I mean, a separate conversation, uh. Certainly, because we have.
Sidewalk avoids over on the west side.
Uh, so that, yeah, so maybe that's, that's my, my plea to counsel on that one. Um, and I think this is in the vague, I don't know the cost and I don't know where it's at. Um, and it's all very broad, but the affordable housing. You know, low, low, low end of that goal is we do a hundred and fifty units in twenty-five years, which uh doesn't feel super awesome. So I don't know if we want to aim higher or if it doesn't matter, we can just do more within the plan, um. But. Just to throw that out, um. And I, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Question about that, so, right, the, the, how many units are we shooting for? Or the other way to look at it is, we have nineteen point six million dollars allocated, sort of like. You build until you run out of money, I mean, realistically. I can imagine how that will actually. Phase and 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 roll out.
In, in my head, that's land acquisition for future Rand Roads, there's. Other, you know, the city's responsibility is to facilitate these other entities to build housing types. Right, and, and even, you know, on the private sector, there's things in here, there's roads. Um, that facilitate private sector development, which is housing, which is needed, um. The, that, that nine point six million to me says, buy land so we can be two more emerged or two more emerged. And then the money will.
On the, we, this is like our, our cost share to instigate spur participating in. Much larger than that dollar figure project.
That, that's, that's the picture in my head.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't think.
I'm gonna let someone else talk for a bit.
I just want to make a comment to what Counselor, um, Sam Miller just mentioned. It is important that we identify what sort of projects similar to Rand, just what we have now, seven eighty. We have had a lot of um interest from other sort of partners that are willing because they want the same goal, right? They want to retain people that are going to work for those organizations and so a similar approach. To other future uh housing endeavors. Would be nice to have on here.
Yeah, so land, land for a land trust, um, or a housing trust, um, that kind of thing, to, to me, it's all sort of, how do we be strategic? So, so I, I think we're.
So, I guess, how do we feel about the wording you've been? How do we feel about the wording of these, this, these housing projects? Does this, does this describe, have it in a way that sort of gives us the, gives us the room for maneuver in, in, in the vision you're describing? Land acquisition development, I mean, it seems pretty.
I mean, I think it, I expect, I apparently, I think it gives us a lot of room to maneuver, maybe to the, if we're trying to sell this to the community. Potentially, there is some value in saying at least some portion of these will be free, you know, AD and below and. We want to make sure that there is a mix of rent and, and I don't know how we achieve that, but like right now, it's like, well, you could do whatever. Uh, I think it's valuable, whatever, like any, any one in that is needed and way beyond needed than we can build, but.
Um.
Do you think there's a risk that is this project, this results in us making. Like housing units for only one hundred and ninety-eight percent focus, like only, only that higher, there, there, there's no lower number than one twenty.
I mean, I, I think there's a bit of, you can trust future councils to hopefully not do that, but I do think there's value in saying, like, yeah, I don't. I don't think we've met the community need if we only did, you know, one ten to one twenty.
I would also note that our experience so far has been that that's not where matching grants and other aid has been, really, if anything, that's where the gap is, right? Eighty to one twenty, much more likely to find state assistance and other funds for eighty envelope. So when we think about the city providing land and other limited funds, definitely going to be dependent or opportunistic on what other funding mechanisms are available. So I'm not, I'm not particularly worried about the one nineteen problem.
Great, great, thank you.
Is, is not this endeavor to help for housing development so people can afford, even if they're one twenty, one nineteen. Uh, median income, be able to afford to live here, that leads into our zoning types or build types and that sort of thing. So if, if West Side is developed. The, the quotes appropriately, then there will be more uh housing choices for people anyway. So I don't know if we want necessarily um commit or shoehorn a particular. Um, set of requirements at this point to a particular income bracket or anything like that.
I don't think that the Rand project would primarily or very precisely be defined as hundred twenty percent and below. There's a significant focus on Rand at a much lower percentile than that.
Mm-hmm.
Isn't it all Indian blue?
Mm-hmm.
So, but you, but this is saying, I mean, just, I'm trying to make sure we call what we want, uh. Rand Road's not on this page, I mean, this is not another Rand Road.
Well, these, these absolutely could be, uh, so I think it's, I think the vague is perfectly fine for this, I guess.
Everybody, you're just, well, make the Vegas.
Yeah.
If there's a two, uh, person, David.
Yeah, I think for me, I prefer it to be more specific, um, and then later on, future councils can adjust as, as needed. But if we can be more specific upfront and then if it needs to change, it needs to change. Because I think it's important that our community see that we are also thinking of them in mind, that we want to make sure that housing is affordable for all of those that live here. Not just those that are one twenty and above.
So Megan said she's good with big, I saw Grant nodding at that moment. Does anybody want to suggest we, we uh tweak the percentages a little bit on this page? I don't want to be the only.
If you put the word below.
Yeah.
Up to.
It says end below at the end. Of each of this.
Uh, so we don't even need a new word, we just.
Just move it, so it's clearer.
Abigail's not concerned about one nineteen, but I, and I trust that.
At this moment, anyway.
Cause that's different. But different.
Yeah, the Rand Road project still falls under the same criteria.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks, enough of that. Others?
Uh, I think everybody's covered everything I have, and I don't know, my understanding about this last conversation, it seemed maybe, maybe. Too fairly obvious to me that it's, it's a kind of debate, I, I'm. I respect. Uh, yeah, it's, I, I don't know, I, I was surprised by the conversation, but um, seems like it, it, it's, it's worth it.
Okay, so what we're looking for.
I look, well.
The site?
Right, either direction, I've got a couple of things here that I, I heard, like, uh, the idea to swap. Um, project, uh, P one dot one for a different sidewalk project that staff could identify. Um. And then, uh, comes a pulse and a number of questions that need to respond to, they're really transportation system project questions, so, oh, looks like. Dustin's got some responses, yes, please, let's try to make some.
So anything uh relating to MV one, uh, and one, one two and all their categories really uh are focused around the, the exit. Sixty-two interchange, which is a undersized, non-compliant, uh. Piece of equipment or facility owned by the, the great state of Oregon, however, it is important. Uh, to note that if that intersection is, uh, acid is underserving, we will, we will grind to a pulp. So.
You mean functionally or regulatorily?
Regulatorily.
Yeah.
Um, we will have a very difficult time demonstrating and stating we have adequate public facilities, which is really one of the big deciding factors. When it comes to uh approving developments, both private and public, so, uh, as much as I do not. Want to spend local monies on state facilities, uh, we definitely put it on here as something we want to take the opportunity to leverage local funds. If opportunities to, to see the state, um, go there, and those projects are all based upon. Uh, recommendations from our, our traffic consultants on how the system works at large, so. Um, operating the system, being able to flow traffic from east to west has come from scientists who specialize in subject matter experts. That work for the city in its model. Uh, that's MV one point one, um, and they do, they relate very closely to the function of that. Um, MV eleven, roundabout versus signalized intersection, locally speaking, you absolutely, uh, you heard your local community want to, uh, engage. Or embrace the roundabout capacity, it's gateway feature, much like, um. And that came from the TSP, however, the programmatic agreement in the owner of that road and. Uh, some of the advisory groups regarding the. The historic highway have not embraced the roundabout as a preferred alternative, so the TSP speaks to both. And it's the latest uh iteration in twenty twenty-one, the roundabout became an official option. Uh, that was pushed by the city to be introduced there, so. We don't have the final say on this design, however, roundabout has always been a local favorite and uh contested when it can come to intergovernmental. So it works, so it's one or the other. Uh, um, unlike indeed, uh, West Side Drive, uh, it is not a strode, it is a minor arterial. Um, also capacity and size to handle, um. To handle a, an arterial amount of traffic, it includes both pedestrian bicycle and, um. A second track on one side right now, so it serves, it is served truly as a regional context and. It's inclusion not there now is is really important, not only to the area, but it's actually important to our other. Maester Sherman, twelfth and thirteenth right now. Twelfth and thirteenth are your only north to south arterial roads that serve the entire city. Uh, other than thirty-five, so its inclusion in there is really one of the important features to the transportation system plan. In growing that area from rural residential. Uh, to urban scale residential is the urban growth boundary to grow urban and to collect traffic, uh it's it's pretty important, so. Uh, some of the intent that came from the T S P was we wanted to make the most pedestrian friendly arterial we could get, so that was very intentional. Let's see, what else we got here on this? Uh, P one point one, it it's really your fault, uh however, we do see a. Million, if not, I don't think we've gotten to the B number on that in terms of the historic highway bike path coming to your the town near you. Uh, and landing right there, whether we have the funds and readiness to anticipate that traffic. Whether it's your local residents or your local visitors or both, uh it's just something we see as. As an issue.
I know Councilor Command has his hand up, but.
That was my that was my sense of my rundown.
Yeah, thank you very much. I guess, you know, I have a question for Abigail and Dustin. Um, Abigail, you had mentioned that there's gonna be open houses. Where this information is gonna be presented. And I guess I'll follow up to to Dustin's description, which is very technical. How are you gonna present that information to the public? And how are you going to incorporate the feedback from the public?
Great question. I think we're we're looking to take a list like this, I think probably with the map that you received. And present most of the map and then uh some other maybe more descriptions, photos of these areas to give folks an idea of where they are and what we're looking at. Um, but really to give them something to react to, again, we're not going with a blank piece of paper, what do you want? But these are the things council's looking at, these are the things staff have recommended, and then asking folks if they think anything is missing or if they have. Um, other requests and then presenting that back to you, I think it will probably have one open house and at this point, we think it probably will be virtual. That'd be the best way to um provide the information because we wanna include um simultaneous translation um and make sure that we have. Something that can also be recorded so people can watch it later.
Can I also mention that I appreciate the staff's hard work putting this li- this list together? It's a list that uh is is evidenced by this discussion. Uh facilitated discussion. It's kind of a good starting point for going forward, thank you.
Thank you.
How are you, did you get did you get all your bits in a month? And I'm here for for your discussion. I had a question actually on that last point you were making about the uh Rusden Park. Maybe I'm thinking of it the wrong way, but I don't imagine that folks who are pedaling from Portland. Arriving at Rusden Park are gonna be like, where's the bus for me to put my bike on them? They're gonna roll down that river hotel, am I missing something?
I I think the interpretation, which I do think is wrong, and that's why I'm doing this, is that they arrive at Rusden and say, I'll walk the rest of the way. Which seems unlikely.
Okay, oh, another stuff, a different kind of.
Uh, it's it's not just about the bicycle facility, it's also about hundreds of rooms of hotels that are are being developed. Along that. And expected to be so in the future, so visitors, whether they're on bus, whether they're on foot, I think what we look at is a philosophy of a complete street. So whether they're rolling on sidewalk, um I think if you look at West Cliff in its current capacity. It has developed in a certain way, I'm not sure that's necessarily aligned with the vision of the city in terms of a complete street multimodal. Opportunity, whether it's bicycle, whether it's on foot, whether you're in spandex or whether you're just trying to ride the school up for recreation. I think that is uh the issue that we see there, and it's a significant. Commercial growth area and significant traffic there, that is insignificant or undeveloped infrastructure to support.
Okay, so we were discussing, we got some from Tim, Dustin's finished, you have your.
Just taking my uh comment about the parks and trails and asking about. Acquisition, I I think that if we did acquisition and development instead of construction on. Each of those. P four, P nineteen, P twenty. That it would be. Flexible or.
So P four doesn't say construct.
It basically means construct, I think.
But I think acquire and develop says everything. That not true? I don't know what to suggest for P one dot one, so.
I'll try and the P one one, I I agree with the the suggested change, but that's not the most important sidewalk in our. So we've given you a lot of it, but it sounds to me like we're ready to see it again. Or there's enough changes to be trusted, we're ready to approve, given those kind of all this of changes.
Well, it sounds like there's also an opportunity for the community to give input, and then after that, we would have a final plan that we're. Moving forward with, right?
Right.
So are are we comfortable that Abigail has captured enough changes that we are approving the burden to ascend to the public?
Yes, the are you good with a a list? You know, I uh, yeah, can I have a list to take to the public, in fact, to put on the website fairly soon? Uh, you know, if we look at having a open house in May, we wanna be able to have this up and and publicize it as soon as we can.
So then what you want us to tell you for P one point one is if not that sidewalk, then what sidewalk?
I think we'd probably wanna go back and and identify a other priority sidewalk, which could bring to you, you know, at a future meeting or we could list a couple of different options. Who could easily remove that one and say a West Side sidewalk? Okay, sounds great. She doesn't get nearly as much as I think it should.
Oh, that's true of all of us.
I had a proposed motion for you in your uh packet.
Was the only actual change was the one point one.
Than anything else. It would be good to go over any changes. Before we finalize whatever this is, uh understand, collect, share, changes or direction that we're giving.
Okay, and you have some minor language changes that I don't think I need to put in the motion for.
Right.
Some of the projects, yeah, acquisition and up to one twenty.
Right, I think I I think I've captured, well, I left the housing ones pretty nebulous.
Right, we just we just changed the wording to incomes one twenty and.
Below, just yeah, clean up the grammar there, don't end with the word below, and then, yeah, and then the um removal of P one one.
Okay, so project wise.
Oh, and I think Councilor Zan Miller had the suggestion of, yeah, acquisition and development, not construction, you got that?
Then I can figure out how to make a motion. Thank you. Um, and we're not doing acres, so. I move that we approve the recommended project list with the change um of swapping out P one point one to. Uh, it's currently unknown West Side sidewalks. Or inclusion in the West Side Urban Renewal District Taxing from a funding plan.
Further discussion?
These these other little wording things will just come out in the next.
I will try my best. I think we can probably work with staff, we can try to get you some answers to some of the specific questions, just can send those back out to you in a memo. Um, and maybe and I can get some of those wording changes there as well, and then we'll put all that up on the website. Um, so the public can start reviewing these things, and if you see things there, we can uh we can change them as we go along. Definitely a living document.
I have a third question, uh is this project list the baseline start of unlocking model West Side? Something comes first in our list of stuff. We get these things done first, it unlocks the West Side or is no development.
There's some philosophy that this becomes some of the the infrastructure that is beyond. The magnitude and beyond the lift of any individual development, it's a community-wide infrastructure that is intended to unlock. Some of the development potential there and also serve that, so it's. Uh obligations that need to be served by development and taxes and resources that are raised by that and benefits that extend beyond the community. Your east to west arterial, your north to south arterial are community-wide impacts, so a little they're a little bit above, but they're also. Extra uh impacted and impactful to uh area to occur within the urban redevelopment.
All in favor? Chair, both all opposed? Motion passes.
All right, thank you, I'll be back again with the next chapter very soon.
Excellent, we're gonna take a four-minute break, please.
Thank you, everybody, Dustin, I G A for annexation exemption.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, this is a request uh from ODOT. Um, to allow the connection of a of a sewer connection to the future Route and Trailhead uh for. Uh, for facilities there, in twenty sixteen, the city passed a resolution uh that really changed the the growth patterns in the urban growth area. Requiring uh users of municipal utilities to be a part of the municipality. Um, so there are options for exceptions under unique circumstances, but essentially that resolution states that. The norm will be to connect uh and the unusual may be permitted, so essentially, uh, this is a request that's pretty unique. Um, it is a trailhead, it's not a particularly developable or highly developed site by way of new development and infrastructure. Um, or tax base, and it's 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 rather unusual, so. Uh, ODOT approached us and asked if this would be an acceptable solution. Uh, we were generally amenable to it, however, two provisions that we placed in it were. Okay, regardless of whether you're in or not, you you will need to have participate in the uh sewer install and upgrade necessary there as a contributor to. Uh, to the waste flow, uh and then we took the opportunity to affirm that we felt a trailhead, although not. Development in a conventional sense of vertical. Bricks and sticks, bricks and mortar, uh, a trailhead had a significant opportunity to be a large traffic generator, not only in bicycle and pet traffic, but. You know, historic highway along the waterfall corridor is a good example of uh of traffic. Uh, and the opportunity for that traffic uh to impact an ODOT facility, which you just talked about being exit sixty-two. Therefore, the requirement that we we recommend that uh ODOT, when it places. And does the work for the trailhead, uh performance traffic analysis and start becoming a participating party and some of the remedy and. Take care of its proportionate share of traffic impacts to its own facility. So uh, those are entered into your agreement. ODOT has not approved this, but before we began our uh kind of word spitting and negotiation, we wanted to present if you all see if you had comments and opportunities. For you to see what uh what was what was out there in the works, so. Upon your approval, uh remedy edit recommendation, we will bring this to ODOT for your consideration.
Thank you, Dustin, Dan, do you have anything to say?
Um, I don't, what I have to say is reflected in this draft agreement. And um it's one thing, I I we worked with uh the uh city engineer emeritus Wade Seaborn. Uh, to come up with the proportionate share on the the sewer. Pump station upgrades, and we could have, basically, it it's it's the de minimis twenty-five thousand dollars. Basically for that. Um, and I'm not really sure how ODOT's gonna respond to the uh proportionate share on the uh interchange. They may have a more precise way of dealing with that, but it's something that has to be dealt with, so. We're starting a conversation with a pretty a pretty detailed draft agreement.
Great, thank you, Dan.
I I guess I have a question for you, Dan, around that, so the twenty-five thousand, is that all, and and I see that it has a thirty-year limit. But is the twenty-five thousand, does that also capture any sort of future costs?
Um, with this, well. I don't know.
This is an area that's gonna potentially have growth, right, and we we don't know what that's gonna look like, but potentially forecasting is twenty-five thousand dollars. Is enough for what sort of improvements are needed now versus what sort of improvements could be needed? Five, ten years from now?
If if there are improvements needed five, ten years from now, they probably would not be attributable to this use, so it's the sort of thing we couldn't really. Uh, charge to, you know, subdivisions or private developers, our opportunity to. Impose these kind of charges is kind of. At the at this one time when they're doing the connection. Um, and so that's how that's how we're dealing with it. Um, and I I don't think any future need for growth would be attributable to this trailhead. Let's see, see what I mean?
Megan.
Thank you, um, a couple of questions, and one is really basic, but so the twenty-five thousand is just for the sewer connection. Thank you, um, couple of questions, and one is really basic, but so the twenty-five thousand is just for the sewer connection. They need to do a traffic study to come up with the proportionate share, so that'll be some other amount in addition. Okay, and then, yeah, I also saw this as a thirty year thing, or we, we'll have to renegotiate in thirty years, or? What does that look like?
Well, essentially, I think the term would be. Done, I mean, at that point, they would have been connected, we would have uh exercised our option to have them pay the connection fee, they would be a user and. And in thirty years, you may likely be here, so the terms of the agreement essentially would be done, the only. At risk would be thirty years if they haven't produced this trailhead. Then really, it becomes moot, the, the, the point is to request the extension.
The actual connection, not for maintaining connection. It's for the initial. Link.
Right.
Okay.
This is an agreement just to let them connect without annexing.
Right. So I'm, I'm hip to the general idea, I, I like the um, the. Trailhead park out there and stuff, I do think that asking them to, I mean, it's a significant. You know, we see all the ODOT trailheads in the whole gorge are significant things and. It seems to me not unreasonable to say that the real street improvements that we just talked about at. In the last uh topic would be an obligation of, of the um person putting a park at the end of a. Unimproved road, so, I mean, I, I would. Suggest that we ask them to. To do that as well.
Good idea, what do you think, Dustin?
Well, let's ask.
Right.
I, if it's, if it's the, you're four. Four of seven, we, we absolutely will ask.
I was talking to Arthur Babbitts, who's on this, maybe the chair of the Historic Highway Committee. That's to me like, there's a little bit of a question about whether they're not. It sounds to me, there's a little bit of a question whether or not there will be many parking spaces down there. Sort of a, like a philosophical, like. Behavioral psychology question, like. You know, do I take the grandkid, Mark's grandkid maybe? Down there and ride bikes from there, or do I park at Safeway and ride bikes to there, that's like a huge difference. In uh parking impact.
Yeah, and I think, again, using the waterfall corridor as an example, there's not a whole lot of parking there, yet, see plenty of cars. I mean, so I think when we looked at it, that this is going to be a traffic analysis, not based on four parking lots, but based upon. An ODOT trailhead facility that connects a. World-class bicycle facility. So I think that's the, that's the way we look at it is. You could have zero spaces, you have a trailhead, that's the generator, it's not necessarily the parking spaces that draw the cars there.
And I'm also thinking about the Hatfield. Twin tunnels where they have to put in like the boulders so that people don't poach like. Alright, uh, Grant.
How far down the sewer line go down West Cliff?
Uh, it does go to this facility already, so their connection, they're not having to extend.
In, in Hood River. Um, any development, any property development. In the UGB. Um, requires annexation. Um, except to extenuating, extending circumstances, et cetera, et cetera. Why? This is a question I have for the rest of us, why would we be willing to extend this courtesy to the state for this park that? Theoretically, we wouldn't be willing to extend to any other private uh landowner inside the UGB.
Mark's opinion. This is the, it's a state, it's gonna be a state facility, so it doesn't get us very much in the way of. Added city taxes, and if we can, uh. It is a. Part of a long. Relationship of trading things that we each need from each other, and this is uh, one of those things.
Historically has not the trading of things and on an ad hoc basis gotten the city into a bit of trouble in the past with our development patterns.
We're smarter than used to be.
Uh, well, on, on to Mark's, the other. The, the more merciful of it, of um, this wouldn't be paying us taxes even if annexed, and I'd rather not be responsible for it if it's in the city. With city services. Um, would be part of it, but I also, I could see adding some provision of if this ever changed out of. Public ownership that we. Force annexation, I mean, I, I don't see. The benefit of having a state park in the city. That we have to. Do things for, but. I don't wanna get into a stone gate, so. But I think we could presumably, I mean, Dan can tell me legally.
Yeah, we, we could add requirement to consent to annex if called upon with a waiver of a time limit. I think that's pretty customary now, for those instances where we have development within the UGB that is permitted without annexation. Uh, certain things like ADUs. Mandatory connection, state preemption on us, um, but we do require the new consents to say. At some point, we will, we may be able to call this card and. You will join when, when the time is right, or advantageous when the geography works, so.
How many properties in between the current city limits and? The park already have consents on the record be annexed.
Uh, val- I don't know of any valid consents. Uh, we had a series of consents to annex uh within the past, I believe most everything uh up until. Dan, you recall when we figured out the consents were all invalid? Uh, because they didn't waive the one-year provision, I, I don't recall, but. I feel like through the nineties, uh, we have bad consents.
I don't know when those were in vogue, but they're kind of scattered out there. Um, so, the thing is, uh, I don't think we ever had a. We haven't recently had a contested or actively opposed annexation. Um, this land, I can see it in the next, you know, twenty years being surrounded by city annexed property. But I think Megan's point is pretty valid that. You know, there's really no advantage to the city to annex a state park. Basically. Unless you think of one. You know. I can't, I can't off the top of my head.
This is how about? Last question, how far down the street does the city already provide services?
I believe we have service all the way to Kripik. Yeah, sorry, there's uh tribal fisheries. So, and, and that was customary with extension provision of services outside the city limits prior to two thousand and sixteen.
I would entertain a motion.
Tim, do you have anything to add?
Thanks, Gladys, nothing for me.
Could, can we add something about consent to annex?
Yeah, uh, I believe that's pretty customary, but I, that's a non. That's a pretty easy add for us.
I mean, I didn't see it in the actual thing, so.
Uh, consent to annex would be, would be an easy one, so that would, with a waiver of the one-year requirements, I think if you wanted to. We like those, uh, and if you wanted to make a request for a ped and or some sort of contribution to ped bike facility on West Cliff.
Now's the time to ask.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're gonna go and negotiate with them, so this is, we'll, we'll see, we've been in discussion with this already, so it's not gonna be a new concept.
Great, I move to direct staff to continue the development and negotiation of an IGA with the state of Oregon.
With, with the additions.
With the additions that we talked about today.
Move by Rivera.
I will second that.
Who were featured in the city Facebook this week, congratulations. Uh, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Coonahan votes aye, uh, opposed.
Nay.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Paulson votes nay. Uh, Chair votes aye, motion passes, thank you. Uh, discussion items, we have nothing, city recorder.
Your honor, I'd like to entertain a motion for the first reading ordinance twenty seventy-five by title only.
I move, we read ordinance twenty seventy-five pre-treatment for the first time by title only.
Given that we have seven of us that we wanna do first and second? Now how's working? No?
Call, I'm looking to see if Dan comes back on.
That, that's why we use the rolls.
Uh, let's see, I think it is a simple, we. It's a simple majority for uh two readings in one meeting. Uh, if you're so inclined, and that would make it effective thirty days hence. Um, so, um, it's not, not by emergency clause. Just two readings in one meeting.
I will move that we read ordinance twenty seventy-five pre, pre-treatment for the first and second times by title only.
Move by Saunders. Second. Second by subpoena. Jen.
Counselor subpoena.
Aye.
Counselor Saunders.
Yes.
Counselor Coonahan.
Aye.
Counselor Paulson.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Aye.
Counselor Zan Miller.
Yes.
Your honor.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty seventy-five, ordinance submitting title twelve, public utilities, chapter twelve point zero six. Uniform requirements for the user of the city-owned treatment. Works regarding pre-treatment of wastewater of the Hood River Municipal Code. To make the city's pre-treatment requirements and procedures. For wastewater treatment consistent with the state law and federal law.
Order twenty seventy-five has passed its first and second. Reading by title only, it will become law in thirty days.
City manager comments.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, uh, one item, and that is, uh, we received word from the Oregon Department of Energy. Uh, that they received a notice of intent to file an application for a site certificate for Cascade Renewable Transmission System. Um, you received a copy of this from the city recorder last week. Uh, this is important to you because the facility is located on lands or water, actually in the river. Of the city of Hood River, so city council will be appointed as a special advisory group for the energy facility citing review. Uh, we, there'll be two public hearings, I think, once on May second and May third, ones in the Dows, ones in the city of Portland. Um, none of them in Hood River, so we've asked the um, Department of Energy staff to attend your May eighth meeting, present to you there. Um, so that we can then prepare comments for the formal review, so. Review the materials you have, we'll receive, send more as we receive them, and then we'll have a bigger conversation uh May. But congrats on your, your new special designation as a special advisory group.
It's gonna be a giant cable, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
They presented to the county and it was like the size of a CD like in width.
Well, I love that it's going to require a hydro jet cable machine or jet plow to install. So I'm excited to hear about it. Thank you, that's it for me.
I hope it's deep enough, okay, thank you, Abigail. Uh, committee reports, Doug.
Nothing to report this week.
Megan.
Nothing.
Mark.
Nothing.
Nothing for me?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Oh my god. Where was that? Um, that's at the ODOT Region One meeting, and uh, they are hip to. Localize um, state highways. Let them go.
Can you explain that further?
Yeah, uh, it is happening right now in Tigerd. Um, they are, it's on Hall Boulevard, old. Say highway, they are transferring ownership to the city of Tigerd.
Abigail, we talked about this.
About jurisdictional transfers?
That's what.
Yes. Yep, the city of Hood River has probably done the fastest, one fastest ever, when you uh took over Oak Street during the pandemic.
During, okay, so we did it, Tigerd's doing it.
Yeah, so Tigerd's doing it with a larger stretch, and they are open to the possibility of that in the future. Um, their expectations. Would be to. Have all the, all the design, all of the uh planning and the vision of it in place, already ready to go in order to do that. So, a lot of coordination and planning would have to be done ahead of time. It would take a few years to go, go through that pipeline. But um, that's a, that's in the, in the realm of possibility.
Isn't there a burden to suddenly having to plow their street?
Presumably.
Abigail.
I think, well, I think in the city of Hood River, I think that we uh do a lot of the plowing on ODOT roads. Um, through an informal agreement with ODOT, in part because we're able to access them so much faster than they can. Um, I will note that when uh the city took over um Oak Street through the jurisdictional transfer. The street was already to good standards and the city was able to accept it fairly quickly. Uh, if we were to do other roads uh that ODOT owns in our city, we would want to. Either bring them up to standard first, or for them to come with a big bucket of cash. Uh, so that we could um bring them up to city standards, so.
Does that come up, Grant?
Yes, and uh, ODOT is working with Tigerd on some of those improvements on Hall. So there, it, it is in the realm of possibility in both um, the jurisdictional and a budgetary thing.
And I would note that we've had those in very informal conversations about both. Uh, the twelfth, thirteenth corridor and uh Cascade Avenue. So ODOT's aware of our interest. Sorry, Counselor Saunders.
And, I don't, I don't wanna go too far down it tonight, but I'm wondering, like, if we do the transfer, does that actually mean they butt out, or do they still have a way to? Mean, like mandate what we're doing?
They would butt out, as you put it.
Okay. So like, we could do a roundabout without their approval?
I believe so.
Okay.
Check that, but. Believe so, because they're, they're transferring ownership over. And, and they, they've done the same thing in, in Portland, they uh got rid of Sandy Boulevard entirely. And in order for a developer to build a bunch of housing, affordable housing, whatnot. Um, on the shallow east side around northeast eleventh or so. Um, northeast, or just east, it's right, right there about where um Burnside is. Um, and then they're doing it now with Tigerd, and so it's, it's not something that hasn't been done elsewhere. And then they're also going to have a open house here, uh. On the twenty-fifth. On April twenty-fifth. This month at three in the afternoon, or? In, in the afternoon, you'll get more information about it, I'm sure. Uh, for all of the uh regional Hood River specific. Uh, ODOT projects they're going to be working on, um, not necessarily limited to maybe closing a little bit of the freeway. Westbound eighty-four as it goes over the railroad tracks, just um. Uh, west of the downtown overpass. Uh, that bridge has some structural things they wanna address, so they might close some, close some lanes and rebuild that thing. Yep, so they're gonna go over that project and a few other uh Hood River-centric projects. As well as the rest of the projects throughout the state at that open house. I won't be able to attend, so.
Is that taking place here?
Yeah, it's taking place here at the fire station, I believe. Yep.
Anything else on that?
Nope.
So I've been on the Bridge Committee, I wanna thank Grant for also coming to some of those when I was unable to go. We had a fairly momentous thing happen last week, which is. The ByState Working Group seems to believe. Uh, that putting aside local funding increases our chance of getting state and federal funding. So we had Megan a recommendation that the port wean off of bridge revenue for non-bridge related. Purposes. Sooner than later. We had a pretty detailed discussion about. What that would look like and be off by two thousand and twenty-six, which is the fiscal year, they're budgeting like right now, plus two more. And by June twenty-sixth, they'd be off. And the next day, they approved in their meeting, being off by two thousand and twenty-eight. So, I was a little peeved about that, and the group was, I think, pretty discontented about that, I think it's an important question about like. What power and authority do we and don't we have, like, it's their bridge. Um, I guess there's a little bit of an I told you so right to reserve the right to say I told you so when we, like, you know. Don't, don't lay on the outside funding because the local match was not enough, maybe I, we're just mis. Interpreting or mis predicting that, but. Um. You know, they, they own the bridge, they get the money. We're trying to build a bridge and then tear down their bridges. Think you guys understand, it's a.
Is it a taper or just a? No money for the new bridge?
And there was two discussions about it, I was imagining. And there was two discussions about it. I was imagining of this, and at least somebody was talking about of that.
It was not specified.
So that's my report. I'm not exactly sure what happens next.
I guess that's is there I mean, because the group doesn't have to well, regionally, of course, and economically, we have to have a new bridge. Like, if the group's displeased about it, is the option to just say, fine, this is your boondoggle, go boondoggle it up, or like?
I believe that is within the
Like what, I guess what, what is the next step of, I'm not particularly thrilled to hear that they are waiting that long to stop doing something and they've already told the community they weren't doing.
I agree. Uh, an, uh, sort of incremental step is there's this, uh, entity called, uh, there, there's this, uh, document called the CFA, a Commission Formation Agreement, that none of us have signed yet. And we're just waiting to see what the counties do, and we'll follow their lead. I think it's a good idea. But we're, the BSWG seems to be perceiving that as a lever. Not sure how much it is, but we haven't, we haven't, uh, you guys noticed, you have not voted on that yet. We have not brought that to us. That's, that's my report. Anything to add to that, Grant?
The hope, and peg it to hope if you wish, is that we can still receive state and federal funding. Um, it's anyone's speculation as to the odds of success, given conditions that people agree to. Whether it be two years, three years, five years. Who, who knows? Um, it's not necessarily our decision. Um, hopefully, there is a decision reached that everyone can agree to. I don't know if, um, if that'll happen. If it doesn't happen, it's going to be very difficult, um, for those funds to be available in the future. Um, if anything happens to the bridge in the meantime, no bridge.
Um, I'll move on into mayor comments. I was on Monday with the mayor this morning on KOIN. You can Google that up. I was very, uh, collaborative oriented in my discussion about the bridge. Um, and I would like us to discuss about, uh, Juneteenth. Uh, I guess I would essentially, we should move whether we, whether we want to grant them the, 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 the fee waiver. I would, uh, it, it addresses some, uh, city goals about, about an equitable and inclusive community. I am in favor of this.
I have a quick question. Uh, no conflicting events on that same date in Jackson Park? No scheduling issues? Okay. Um, I would move that we waive fees for the Juneteenth at Jackson Park.
Paulson?
I'll second it.
You can have it.
Second by Rivera. Any further discussion?
I'll just say the Juju, uh, the band that they're, uh, recommending. I stood sound for Double Mountain, very nice group of individuals and should be a heck of a party.
Awesome. Thanks for that knowledge. I appreciate you, Doug. Any, any other, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Zoom votes aye, uh, opposed. Chair votes aye, motion passes unanimously. Yay, Juneteenth. Uh, finally, city budget committee appointments. We have, uh, C. Longchenetti, I don't know who that is. Is that a Chris, sorry. I thought you were volunteering for a committee, Chris. Sorry, I'll, I'll tune in a little better. I knew the Chris part, I was like it.
No, it's okay. Just Longchenetti, your finance director?
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, the budget committee currently has five vacancies. The application, um, the application, uh, expired for members of, our applications Monday, uh, Monday, April 3rd. Um, we received one application, Joseph Shin. Mr. Shin is the general manager for Fish People Seafood, an active member of the community. Um, he's previously run for, uh, Hood River City Council. Um, Gary Reed and G and Rudy Kellner, uh, were, uh, expiring budget committee members who are interested in serving another term. Um, and if appointed, they would, uh, that would leave the community with two vacancies. Um, so the motion and request is that, uh, we accept a Joseph Shin as a member of the budget committee, and then, uh, reappoint Gary Reed and Rudy Kellner to an additional term. Thank you. I would entertain a very much.
I would move to appoint Joseph Sheehan as a new member and to reappoint Gary Reed and Rudy Kellner as continuing members to the city's budget committee.
I second.
Second by Rivera. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Zoom votes aye, motion passes. Uh, council comments. Start with Grant. Thanks, Chris.
Um, I don't have anything new and am excited for a, uh, Juneteenth thing.
Similar, uh, excited for Juneteenth and no additional comments.
Um, I got to be on the radio tier, uh, tour this, this Saturday, and it was, it was really fun and really sweet. Nubia did a great job interviewing and, um, I think, I think I did okay. Who knows? Uh, but, but I thought it was, it was really good. I mean, she asked about, you know, what, what a, what, you know, very human stuff, like, you know, why did you want to be on council and, and what, what are your goals and stuff? And what did you not accomplish yet and stuff? So I, I thought it was good, and I, I think everyone else is doing that as well. Um, so, uh, hopefully it can be a tiny seed that grows into some, something that we can do more of. So that's good. Um, I'm, I'm moved by the enforcement, you know, the folks that came to us about an enforcement thing. I did talk to Abigail at our, our, um, informal discussion, and it, it seems like that there might be some, you know, whether it's a urban camping or a 72-hour move thing that maybe we can do without having it be a really, really big project. I'm sensitive to uh, so I'm sensitive to it's outside the, uh, work plan except for the mention of enforcement. Um, I think this is the kind of stuff that I hear a lot of, which is just, you know, it, it evades like common sense, right? That of course we should be able to not have someone be in front of someone else's house for four years kind of thing. Um, so I, I don't maybe I'm asking for a, a, a few minutes of a future agenda to talk about it, so. And that is everything I had in a good meeting.
I don't think I have anything to add.
Excited to be attending the fifth grade tour tomorrow and getting acquainted with Turtle Town. So we'll, if any, if any of the fifth graders are watching this, I'll see you tomorrow. Um, second thing, uh, Abigail and I spoke, um, seemed that a number of us had been hearing about, uh, from constituents, not sure why this particular week about Lyft and Uber, uh, being a public safety DUI concern, that that's not an availability in our community. Um, so Aban, Abigail and I discussed, you know, what it would take for an ordinance. Um, I understand it's something that's fallen off the priorities list uh, in the past, so, um, more or less would be looking at what had been done in the past, what, what, what type of difficulty, uh, and amount of effort and ordinance would be, um, et cetera, just getting a little fact finding out there what's been done in the past. I'm not sure if any of you have heard anything, um, but it seemed that, wow, I heard from four people today and hmm, you know, that kind of thing. Uh, so discussed it.
Like, it requires an ordinance?
I, I think so. Yeah, my understanding, uh, in the past was, uh, that uh, that Uber, maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but that Uber had approached the city and said, hey, here's our regulatory framework that we had with Portland. Do you want to adopt this? And I think when the city said, well, we'd like to create our own regulatory framework, there wasn't an interest in kind of entering those kind of negotiations, so. Uh, but that I think is of several years old, you know, it predates me, so I don't know a lot about that.
I have no idea there was.
We could at least do a little bit of finding out what's required, work with our city attorney and, and come back to you with an overview of it.
Is that the will of the council?
I see Dan coming forward.
I, I see this as kind of a hybrid between, uh, franchising and taxi regulation. So it's a, it's a new creature and it's, it's worth looking at, um, is if you guys make the policy choice to allow it to happen.
I would support exploring those options. Uh, we've talked about just lack of access, especially in the peaks season of tourism here, and we, we've had our chief and, and, um, I can't think of her name right now, that have presented on the ripple effects, right, of folks going out and drinking and not having access to public transportation and the impacts of that. So I would, um, love to explore those options.
Anybody opposed to Abigail sniffing around a little bit? Go forth.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Anything else?
No, not for me.
Great. We now have an executive session, so I read this script. City council will now meet in executive session pursuant to, pursuant to ORS 192 dot 661E to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media, to whom I'm grateful having attended NOAA, and designated staff are allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room and we will end the public broadcast. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made nor final action taken in executive session. The executive session is anticipated to last 30 minutes. At the end of the executive session, the city council meeting will be adjourned and no action will be taken. We will now discontinue the live feed and recording. Thank you, Jen.